I'm going to call this meeting of the Salem City Council for the purposes of a work session to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kaiser.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Just here.
Counselor Nanki.
Sitting in my seat.
Counselor McCoyd.
Here.
Counselor Osick.
Not present yet.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. Okay. I'm just looking at this. Should we -- why don't we give him the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I am going to alert you that at the end of the meeting, we will have time for public comment or at some other point that I think it makes sense to have public comments. So be prepared for any moment I'll suddenly call for public comments. So people, I don't know if there's a sign up sheet. There is a sign up sheet, so if you're interested in speaking, be sure to sign up. Okay. And do we have any additions? Yes, we do. Written testimony. Do you want to make a motion, Counselor McCoyd? I've had dig for add some additions here.
Oh.
That's what it says here. So we're going to do it.
Who's written testimony?
On my list of things to ask you to do.
You can do it.
You can do it.
I move additions to the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those papers say aye?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to have a discussion of the transient occupancy tax. So where would you like to begin, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity tonight to share with you information regarding the transient occupancy tax. This was requested by Council. It's an opportunity for us to share with you information regarding policies and uses of the tax, of this important revenue source for the city and the community. And Norm Wright, Norman Wright, will start us off this evening.
Thank you, sir. So Mayor, members of Council, our purpose with this presentation tonight is to give you a bit of an overview of the TOT fund as a whole. It's a very large fund, and so there are very important pieces of this, as well as certain pieces specific to the cultural facilities operators that are all very important and as a whole should be part of the considerations of any conversation that occurs tonight. So the fund as a whole will be detailed for you, as well as some history about the operation of that fund going back a few years. We will also want to present to you some of our proposed budget for 2018, 2019, as it relates to the TOT funds, so that you can understand what we are currently positioned to propose as the budget for that year, so that you can understand as well some of the implications of any changes that would occur with that proposal as it is currently prepared. So with that in mind, we do have a somewhat brief and hopefully very informative presentation here for you, and Chris Snyder will start that off.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Chris Snyder. I'm the management analyst for the Community Development Department and staff liaison to the Cultural Tourism Promotion Advisory Board, or TOT Board for short. We do have in the audience some members of the TOT Board here. Chair Laura Aguero, Scott Snyder, Claudia Forrester, and Adam Kohler. As I see, welcome. So welcome to TOT 101. I'm your instructor today. So let's get started. So the Culture and Tourism, the Cultural Tourism Fund, otherwise known as the TOT Fund, is a fund that is funded by a 9 percent tax on the overnight stays at our local hotels and motels, bed and breakfasts, campsites, et cetera. Here, we're located within the city. And this tax is known as the transient occupancy tax, hence the TOT. This fund is solely dependent upon this tax. If the economy is poor and people are not making reservations or staying overnight at the hotels here, there's no revenue to come in to support the events and stuff that would go on with this funding. That being said, this is really a great fund. There's a lot of great things the city does with this money, and it's a great way to encourage tourism and improve the quality of life of our residents. So the few things that we're going to talk about are we're going to talk about how these funds can be used, the overarching piece of that, how we currently use it, and obviously the here discussion is what about future use? So how can the fund be used? So the overarching rule is Charter Section 56. This is established by a vote of the people. And in your blue binders on your desk, you also have all this information, provided everything you need to know or want to know, possibly need to know or want to know about TOT is there. So all of the governing bodies' informations, the Charter, the SRC 16 and 37, council policy C1, the TOT Board's guidance and everything else is all included in there, along with this current year's applications and scoring criteria and everything else, as well as the budget that we're going to be talking about. So back to Charter 6 and 56, there are four main things that we can use transient occupancy tax monies on as voted by the people. You can read through those in general. There are vehicular entrance ways, pedestrian entrance ways, there's parks, urban beautification generally. We use that for our historic parks, all parks that are related to tourism, not any of the other parks that are located in other parts of the city. We use it for improvements, too, in operation of major tourist attraction and cultural facilities. The city owns four city-owned historic buildings, Deepwood, the Bush House complex with Bush Barn Gallery. We own two or three buildings over at AC Gilbert's, and we own the riverfront carousel. Those are the big locations of city-owned facilities, and money is used for that. And then other things that are used for contracts, mainly for general tourism, is what we use the rest of it. So here, we're going to look at the big picture, and I'll do my best to try and keep this at a high level. This is the current year budget, and this is in a pie chart. We've, I've taken and divided out the main sections of where this funding goes to. You can see a rather large green portion for parks. Included in there are one-time multi-year projects such as the Minto Island Brown Trail improvements, things like the softball complex renovations, tennis courts have been included in part of those things. But this one here, I forget the exact ones. I think it's tennis courts and riverfront electrical stuff is included in there this year. On here, we have, we've broken out also the city-owned historic buildings, maintenance costs and utilities, the general administration, and then the CTPAB TOT grants, the grant program, which is where these facility operators receive their funding from, is that 11 percent, $458,760 amount is where you would find all the grants. Now, you're going to get a little bit of a sneak peek into the city manager's proposed budget for next year. This is it. So we've increased the funding to the grant portion. $600,000 was recommended for the TOT grants section. The travel sale in peace is 1.1 million. It's based off a 25 percent fixed allocation of 4.4 is what we're projecting revenues to be. And with this fixed allocation, you know, obviously if revenues don't come in that high, there's going to have to be some type of reconciliation, but we're fixed as far as that travel sale in pieces, that's how much money is being set aside for that. Everything else is up to the discretion of the city manager, and that is outlined in council policy C1, and we'll get into that here shortly. Here is an overview of the last six years of actual expenditures, plus the next two years of budget, so current year and this proposed year. On the far left, you'll see the travel Salem increases, the funding history for that. In 1617 is when a fixed allocation was motioned by the city council to fix a, provide a fixed allocation to travel Salem, the 25 percent of TOT revenues. Then we have the grant allocation pieces. You can see there's a slight increase in those, and then a jump into this next one. There's convention center funding, which is relatively flat and level. There's general administration for contract administration, staff support, and the likes of that. And then we have city programs, parks, and one-time CIP projects that we're being able to fund it by things that the general fund normally would not be able to fund, so major programs, those kind of things. Also included in here are the costs of our city-owned historic buildings. And it's slightly different from our slice of the pie. The pie, I broke that out, so you could see the difference in where the funding was going for the city-owned historic buildings. So otherwise, you see that included in the parks. All park funding is tourism-related. Base funding goes for places such as Riverfront Park, Wallace Marine, Busch Park and Rose Gardens, Pioneer Cemetery, Deepwood Gardens, and then other programs that, other special projects were for the Minto Island Trail improvements that are taking place. Those are other large dollar amounts. Wallace Marine Softball Complex, Woodmansey Tennis Court Renovations. That was a unique one. That was a last minute, oh, we've got a, we've won the USAA tournament for tennis tournament here, and we're like, okay, well, our courts aren't in good shape. How do we fund that? And that was a quick decision that we had some funding available in this TOT to be able to absorb that with that flexibility of not having a fixed allocation anywhere else. The park's special projects funding criteria are based on priority needs. They're usually typically projects that are beyond the general fund's ability to fund. They're tourism-related. They meet the Charter 56, and they are presented to the TOT Board for review and approval every budget year. So now, let's get into the grant program. This is probably where the majority of your questions will want to be focused on. The top program, or the grant program, is where the facility operators receive their funding. The Cultural Tourism Promotion Advisory Board is tasked with the responsibility of identifying criteria for these applications, for the scoring of those applications, and for the recommendation to city council on which funds, which events and which applications to recommend for approval. In past years, they've received approximately 47 to 48 applications. This last year, we received 48 applications, and they approved funding for 40 of them. The requirements here is that all the organizations that are going to receive grant funding, they have to attend an orientation in October. The major tourists or cultural facility operators are limited to three grants per year. They receive a facility grant, and then they can apply for either two special events, maximum of $10,000 each, so additional $20,000, or one event and one capital improvement grant. So if they have a need HVAC system, roof repair, whatever, painting, siding, whatever, if it's not the city's responsibility to fund, to repair, if it's not a city-owned building, facility, then they can apply for up to $10,000 worth of funding for that, for a CIP grant. And then events are limited durations. Primary focus cannot be for raising funds. Capital improvements, they receive a 50 percent of the actual costs, so there's a 50 percent match on their, on this grant application. And they all have to be within policy C1 criteria, which is funding criteria for whatever the allocation, whatever dollar amount, total amount of funding for these grants. 60 percent of it, a minimum of 60 percent, has to go to the facility operators. A minimum of 25 percent goes for special events, and a maximum of 10 percent is for capital assets. And general requirements are that they be eligible under Charter 56, which they are, and then a 501(c) nonprofit organization. So here's the current year funding for grants, for the grant program. The total grant funding available was $458,760. It was based mainly on the amount of applications received and approved by the TOT Board. 60 percent of that is $277,000. That went to be split among nine facility operators. $144,800 was for special events, and $36,500 for capital improvements. And that's in the current year that we're working on. To see what this next budget cycle looks like, there's total grant funding of $600,000. The 60 percent is $360,000 for facility operators to split among the nine operators. And then we had a, we funded a lot more events this year, so $212,630 worth of special events were funded. That equates to 35 percent of that piece of the pie. And then $27,000 for capital improvements. So here is in relation to the facility allocation method, just to give you an idea of how that works. Based on council policy C1, 60 percent of that $600,000, which is the city manager's allocation, is $360,000. The grants were scored and compiled by nine TOT Board members. Those average scores are then placed in this spreadsheet and tallied to the bottom to 147,860, and then a percentage of that is calculated based off of that average score that they received. The four green highlighted facility operators up there operate in city-owned facilities. And so with that, they don't, there's some caveats to that in the sense that they don't pay rent, and the city reimburses 20 percent of the utility costs for those operators Going forward, to be able to see the full picture of what the facility operators are receiving this year, you also have to include their events and capital improvement requests, which total $99,370, and that equals a total award of $459,370, which is actually more than what the current year's budget was for all of the grants included.
I want to just butt in there for just a moment and thank you and the TOT Board in particular for responding to city council direction from last year, or at least our sense of concern that we weren't seeing enough going toward events and that the scoring system need to be revised, that there was really good work down there. I really want to thank you for focusing on that and taking us seriously on that. Thank you very much. Seeing this increase to 32 percent is extremely encouraging. These events are a real hit in this community. I think we only need to look at a couple of them to realize how important they are. So thank you very much.
It was unique. The TOT Board is very cognizant of the desire for council. One of the things that they made as far as a change from last year to this year was the ability to do a second round of scoring, take a look at the scores, and do a second allocation, basically, if there was any additional funding left over from the policy allocation. So what was unique this year is there was, after the first round of scoring, there was approximately $60,000, $61,000 worth of funding available, and there was a request from the facility operators to take that extra amount and give it to them as part of their operating budget.
Take it away from events?
Not, no, because, well, it wouldn't be originally, it wasn't, the second tier of scoring hadn't taken place, so that money had not been allocated to the other events. So the first round of scoring, they funded everything that was available as far as had a passing score by, based on the criteria. After that criteria was, once the allocation was known, then there was an extra $60,000 that could be allocated to do the second review. And instead, and one of the options that they could have chosen was to fund facility operators and just use that money straight for facility operating, increasing that for the facility operators, or go back through the second tier and identify which events they want to fund at what level, or some percentage of that amount or whatever. And then what happened was they chose to fund more events rather than allocate money, more money to the operators.
That's what that money's for, so go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah. So as we get into, before we get into the 15 percent scenario.
Before we move into that, can I, can I ask some questions?
Sure.
I've got a series of them.
Yeah, because these will go by and try to remember. Yeah.
Exactly. I've got a series of them that kind of build up.
Yeah.
I want to go back to the criteria, back where you talked about the, I want to make sure I fully understand what's in the city charter about enhancement and beautification of vehicular and pedestrian entrance ways, urban beautification generally, and that the series of four criteria there. So, because I heard, I think I understand what that list says, but then I heard you say some things that were kind of sub-criteria or additional criteria that I didn't, I don't read in this list. And so, but clearly, you have a clear understanding of it, but I'm not reading it. And so I want to understand where those, where the gap is, and so, because I want my understanding to be where yours is.
Okay. So if I think I understand what you're asking correctly, is that, you know, we have this criteria here, but you're hearing other criteria. And let me clarify if that other criteria is the council policy, where the 60, 25, 10?
For instance, you said, well, we could fund certain historic parks, but not other parks.
Okay.
I don't see that here. And then you also said that we funded Woodmansey Park.
Okay.
And some tennis courts and Busch Park.
Okay.
Because there was a major event coming in.
Sure, I understand that.
So in general, yeah, urban beautification generally, that would be allowable use, and that's general across. So we technically, based on that, I suppose you could fund all of the parks in the city would be fine. Typically, what we do as a city, we take a look at which parks are tourism-related, because the funding that goes to, that comes into this fund and can be used for tourism only comes if there's people coming and staying at the hotels. If nobody's paying the tax, then there's no money coming in to fund all the parks. And if we made the allocation and said, you know what, let's just go ahead and fully fund all the park systems out of this fund, even though it's not directly related to travel, to tourism, and it has no impact on bringing more people, it's not the, it's not the crown jewel of the city that people are coming to see, it doesn't have a return on that investment.
So just to piggyback off of that, the special events primary focus of, special events' primary focus of raising funds is one of the requirements that I saw. Does that mean that it has to be a charged event, or that it would be?
So no, that is what you're talking about on the fundraiser.
I guess my.
That's one of the limitations. It's, it can't, the special event cannot be a fundraiser event.
I guess, I'm confused. So I think by your answer, it wouldn't be a fundraiser for the institution or for the event itself. What I'm trying to figure out is if you're wanting it to be raising funds, as in we're selling goods, or we're charging admission, or we're putting people in the hotels.
So this is, this is a criteria that the TOT Board has for the grants, for special event grants, and the criteria is related to putting on an event. If the primary focus of the event is to raise money, that there's different, I mean, they'll charge entrance fees, they'll, they'll have other kinds of things involved with that. It doesn't, it's not an event being put on for the general public then. There's a barrier.
So it can't be a free event?
It can be a free event. No, we prefer that they be free events, that they be.
Didn't it say that primary?
Do you want to help me out here and kind of?
Can you go back? There was, it said primary, primary event focus of raising funds.
Yeah, that's the limitation.
No, okay. It says on.
Wait, 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 wait.
Just a minute.
Sorry.
Because we're talking to people in the audience. Let's get the question out and the answer from him, or get someone up here to answer.
I think it's cleared up, Chris. I think there's a typo. Special event limitation, I read that as on events with the primary focus of raising funds, meaning we're go if you're raising funds and charging for an event. I'm understanding that that is a typo, and it should say no events with the primary focus of raising funds. That clears it up. Thank you.
Got it? It's okay.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you. Yes?
I wanted to follow up still on my question from earlier.
Sure.
So you kind of went from one extreme to the other, which is we only, we only can do, say, heritage parks, things like that, that are, that are going to bring people in, or we could fund the entire park system. I'm not suggesting that we fund the entire park system out of the TOT, because you talked about wanting to have a, you know, fund our crown jewels, but there are, there might be other diamonds in the rough out there that we just need a little bit of money to get them into the crown jewel status. And if they're eligible to, for these funds, then shouldn't we be open to that idea? And what I'm hearing you say is we're not, but what I'm reading in the policy is we should be.
You could be. We could. I don't have any discretion over that particular piece of it.
Who does?
That would be within Public Works, the park system and the city manager.
Counselor, if I may, while there are charter and policy limitations on the use of transient occupancy tax, there are also statutory limitations. And tourism is defined in statute as a visit, an overnight stay of more than 60 miles. And that's been the nexus for limiting use of TOT funds for our parks to those parks that are either a destination in themselves, perhaps the crown jewel that was referred to earlier, or parks that are hosting events that draw tourism, tourists and tourism. And we are, we are watched by organizations statewide that are responsible for oversight of how cities choose to spend their TOT funds. Newport, for example, uses TOT revenues to fund their police department, to help service the tourism industry in that city. And the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association kind of monitors how cities spend their TOT revenue. So I think, as Chris said, we've chosen over the years to focus our use of TOT funds within that park piece of the pie, on the entrance ways, the gateways into the city, and those parks that are a destination for tourists in themselves, or that host events that our tourism draws.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just kind of one clarifying piece and then a question, because I know in 17 years of voting in this, I think there's been at least seven to 10 years where we've had to waive policy C1 and change that allocation. And I think with the recent changes, we haven't actually had to do that in the last couple of years, which is a nice thing. But council still retains the ability to modify that at any time if something strange were to come up and we would want to shift that allocation a bit based on circumstances, correct?
That's council policy.
So then, getting back to the front end, when does the TOT Board actually review the applications?
So the most recent batch of applications were received in November this last year and were given to the TOT Board around mid-December.
Okay.
And they had December through February basically to review and score the 48 applications that were received. No small undertaking for volunteers.
Until we have a good handle on what special events are in the pipe for?
We do.
18, 19.
We do.
Okay.
It's, there's actually a list in your book.
Okay, excellent.
If you'd like to.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I've got some questions on the whole 15 percent allocation, but I'm going to save those until we get to it, because I have some other kind of questions. I'll get to it, Brad. Don't worry. First of all, I'm looking at the graph, the bar graph that you've got, you had put up So what I notice is of everything there, commendably, administration. So, what I notice is, of everything there, commendably, administration stays pretty flat, but I also see the convention center stays flat. Is that because the convention center is now operating at a, they're bringing in more revenue, so they, they don't need as much from TOT grants?
The, the spike at the very beginning, there used to be a site account, a gain-loss reserve agreement with the city, that when we reached a funding level of $4 million in that gain-loss reserve, the city would no longer need to kick in $300,000 a year.
Yeah, I recall that, yeah.
And that's, that's what that basic drop is, is we're no longer having to, required to fund that gain-loss
Because they're, they're making
They've been in the black since the beginning.
They're making more money.
They've been, they've been in the black since the beginning.
I'm going to have the manager speak on this one as well. We've talked about it, and I think he has an interesting perspective. So, be interested in that.
Perhaps Deputy City Manager Casey Duncan can provide that interesting
Woo, he's already coming up.
Hopefully, I've got the right perspective here.
I'll tell ya.
Yes. So, as Chris speaks to the, the gain-loss reserve, where that comes in and is highly important is for convention centers, much like the ballfields, maintenance of those is highly important, and staying current and relevant, and being able to attract various conventions, and ensure that tourism is coming to Salem. And so, the purpose of establishing that is, was not only to ensure that operations could continue, not knowing what sort of attraction Salem would be to the convention market, but also knowing that there are large capital investments that will take place over time to keep that facility modern and in good working condition, and an attractive place where people will want to come. So, over time, as this major expenditure, such as an HVAC system, or kitchen expansion, or roof, or other things come into play, the convention center will, and I could be corrected here, look at their operating budgets, and perhaps dip into some of those reserves to make those extreme capital expenditures. And then the TOT fund, with the flexibility that we currently have, provides us an opportunity to backfill that and ensure that reserves are kept there for the proper maintenance and upkeep of that facility, to continue to attract conventions and visitors to Salem.
Okay? Because that's exact, I thought that, when I heard that description, I thought that was quite good. It does describe, if you don't have a sinking fund, and you're trying to keep a building modern, you run into serious problems down the road, and you have to go to the taxpayers and make them pay for it. Instead, we're, we're doing it a little bit for me here.
Mr. Mayor, if Councilor Cook has a question related to that, I would defer to her. If not, I'll
Why don't you finish, and I'll call on Councilor Cook.
Okay. Then, I'm still looking at the chart, Chris, and not only is parks just huge there, as you can see from the percentage, but it also seems to really have taken some sort of dramatic jumps, you know, in terms of absolute percentage, when you look at it from the earlier years to where it is now. Could you explain that, please?
To the best of my ability, yes. The majority of that included in that piece is also city-owned buildings, maintenance. So, it's not just parks. This is the, this view is based on cost center view, it's a budgeting cost center view. But within that, you know, $400,000 usually is about how much we spend on city-owned historic buildings for their maintenance and upkeep. But we had, we had managed the fund so well that we had extra, we had beginning fund balance that would allow us to meet the needs of the improvements to Minto Island Brown. There was like $500,000 of improvements that were put in for the trails with, with the new bridge going across the way. There was a need to find a way of funding those trails, and improving that, the Minto Island area with that. And so, there was an allocation set aside for that, out of the TOT money, out of the TOT money that's included in that.
Thanks. I suppose one could look at this and say, in some ways, we are funding parks and maintenance of our building through the TOT funds. I don't at all think that that's inappropriate, it's just that it's, we can do it that way because we don't have the money in the general funds?
It's because we have the flexibility to be able to do that now. If there is no flexibility, and a need arises, we can't address that need.
Are you, are you presaging the 15 percent argument here? Then, I'm looking at all park funding as tourism-related. It's your next slide, please. So, I look at that, and I see that, and Riverfront, and Busch Park, and Deepwood Gardens, all have some of the cultural-related things. So, is there any of this park funding that is going into the, the big spikes that we saw in the one before? Does any of that go directly toward the actual buildings that are, how's the cultural centers?
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking.
Yeah, okay, well, they, maybe not.
I believe the question here is whether or not any of those large capital improvement projects shown on the previous slide were improvement projects that benefited these cultural facilities. So, I see here Busch Park sprinkler system replacement, that is certainly something that might constitute a benefit to the cultural facilities. Is that the case, Chris?
So, there'd be other, yes.
Was there any other part of my question that, that I missed, Norm, that you could ask him?
I don't believe so. I think you made a good distinction earlier, that the parks revenue, or the parks funding that is shown in that previous slide, is for the tourism, tourism-related activities.
So, I guess I was saying, like, let's say the boiler blows up at, at Deepwood. Is that something that could be, would be included in the parks and historic maintenance there?
Yeah, that would fall under that category.
Just one more question, Mayor.
That would be budgeted for, out of that category.
Good, thanks. Then, I'm now looking at the CTPAB grant manual requirements. You indicated that 47, 48 people, or groups apply, and you awarded them to 40. The other eight, were they not awarded because they were worthy, but you ran out of money? Or were they not awarded because they did not rise to the level of meeting the criteria to get money?
Yes, they didn't rise to the ability to get money.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I asked you a compound question, which I would never do in the courtroom.
Yes, to part two, I think.
If I may, Councilor Anderson, if I may, I think one, one example of not rising to the occasion, there was literally, because another, another important fact for this fund as well, it's, it's, tourism is regional in nature, Salem does have a responsibility to try to ensure that dollars raised in Salem are spent in Salem. And one of the event applications was actually for an event that is outside the city limit. So, that one was not chosen by, or recommended by the TOT Advisory Board, as an example of not rising to the occasion.
Councilor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the same concern as Tom, as far as the maintenance costs, and how much deferred maintenance there could possibly be. I understand the importance of the conference center, but as we're looking at deferred maintenance across the line, I just wonder, what else is out there? Are we dependent on operators for those kind of assessments? Just curious.
Excellent question. Excellent question, yeah. Part of the funding last year, or in the current year, actually was for a survey to be done of our historic buildings that are owned by the city, so Bush House, Deepwood, and the facilities are located around those that are city-owned, and to do an assessment of what kind of maintenance needs there are going into the future. The last one was done 1996, I think.
Yeah.
And there was, there was things like structural stabilities, you know, for earthquake stuff like that, that were found, and those were recommended. And so, that, that is something that the city does take on. They've got the funding this year to do that assessment. We have a third-party independent review come out and do that, structural engineer.
So, did I understand you correctly? The assessment's already been done?
It has not been completed yet, but it has been funded in this current year.
And so, the assessment will be done this year?
Hopefully, yes.
But your routine maintenance is done by the city on these houses?
Routine maintenance is
That, that I think is important. I was one of the people that wrote this, I chaired the committee that put this together. And the problem at that time, and it's been, I don't know how many, 17 years ago, was those buildings were, those old historic buildings were falling apart. And the, the community of hotel owners in particular stepped up and said, you know, this, part of this absolutely has to go into upgrading these buildings and maintaining them. And it's one of the costs avoided by friends-of-people. They don't have to do that, they, they do get a break on their utilities, and when some major capital project occurs at their facility, this, this fund and others step up. So, it is, it actually does keep it from getting out of hand again, because, boy, it was out of hand, you remember? Yeah, it really was a mess at that time. Yeah, Steve?
So, following up on that, I had a question. Your 217, 18 TOT fund budget slide, it wasn't clear to me, it's the 2017, 18 one, what's the actual numbers on it?
That
Anyway, you've got, you've got CTPAB TOT grants, 11 percent, $458,000. And then the other one is city-owned historic building maintenance and utilities, $418,000, and that's 10 percent. I guess my question is, are some of the funds in the city-owned historic building maintenance and utilities funds being expended on the, on the, on the buildings and things that are in the cultural tourism program? And if so, what percentage is that?
So, the city-owned piece, that 10 percent, is for all of the city-owned historic buildings, which is Bush House, Deepwood, and B.C. Gilbert's, the Rock and Field House, and what are the other ones? For the Bush House and Deepwood, those are, those are the costs that are associated with building maintenance that are done either by our city-owned facility operator, our facility maintenance people, or through contract with a contractor to do the work, whatever work is needed.
So, to make sure you understand, so that whole 10 percent is being spent in some way on our cultural tourism program?
It is, on the facility operators, yes.
Right? In addition to the grants?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, do you want to, oh, okay. Do you want to move ahead, then, in your slideshow?
So, here we come to the, the 15 percent allocation piece. And this is, you know, to clarify what you've seen in the, in the budget so far, is the big picture of who receives TOT funding, from Travel Salem to the grants, to the convention center, to general administration, costs for our city-owned historic buildings, and our historic parks and park, and park special projects. What the cultural heritage facility operators are asking for is a fixed 15 percent of TOT revenues to be split among the nine existing operators, which would not include any of the special events or capital improvement grant money. So, that dollar amount would be $666,525 to be split among the five, split among the nine facility operators, is what their request is.
Facility operators?
Facility operators.
Can you list those?
Those would be, those, those nine right there. Gilbert House, Children's Museum.
I want to hear them all loud.
Huh? You want me to read them out?
Yeah, I want to know who's doing this.
So, Gilbert House, Children's Museum, Deepwood Museum and Gardens, Elsinore Theater, Hallie Ford Museum of Art, Riverfront Carousel, Salem Art Association, Salem Multicultural Institute, the Willamette Art Center, and the Willamette Heritage Center.
Now, my recollection just remind me, but this is not a closed universe. This is an open universe that can grow, and has grown. I mean, Hallie Ford didn't exist at one time. The Elsinore was a theater, a movie theater. So, these can, the carousel was built and came into this program. So, this can grow, so we would be growing a, a portion of the budget, then, that would take 15 percent as they enter this part of the program. Is the threat, what is the threshold into this list?
The threshold is, they have to prove that they are a facility operator. They have to have a physical location that's available and open to the public, you know, basically, you know, 365, you know.
Do you have to own your building, or just rent it?
You do not have to own the building, but you have to have a physical location that you're operating in that's available.
So, like enlightened theatrics could be on this list?
Enlightened theatrics.
In fact, probably should be, it's missing right now.
They, they could very well be, yes. In the past, we've had the Grand Theater before the Elsinore, or before the enlightened theatrics.
Do they have, do they have to be nonprofits?
Yes, they do have to be a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), 501(c)(4), or 501(c)(6).
Okay, so, do we have any c4s? I know I'd get you sooner than I know.
Dangerous stuff. Following up on Councilor McCoy's earlier question, if we included that other capital amount into the grant amount, what would the percentage, what would, we're talking about a 15 percent scenario, what would the percentage be currently, if we included that other amount?
Okay, repeat, I don't quite sure.
Earlier, he asked, you know, we give an amount to the, to the, this group, and then we also give a separate amount to facilities issues that they happen to occupy, some of these happen to occupy. If we included that amount into the grant amount, what would the percentage be? Would it, would it be 15 percent, less than 15 percent, more than 15 percent?
It would be more than 15 percent, I believe, if you take a look at your
13 and 10.
Yeah, 11 and 10. 24.
So, 11 and 10 would be 21, and then in the budget year, it'd be 24?
But, not all of this list gets those funds, though, right?
No.
Just the ones we own?
Just, just the, the orange portion is the piece that we're talking about, that's grant money.
Okay, okay, yes. Councilor Kizer?
Thanks, I was just going to make the comment that I think the historic building maintenance only applies to those properties that the city owns.
That's correct.
So, there's nine organizations, but only
That's correct.
Less than half actually use those facilities. Back to the, the CTPAB, the actual $600,000 grant amount, are those facility operators eligible to apply for the special event grants?
Yes.
That 35 percent piece? And do you have, off the top of your head, how much of that 35 percent did they take of that, the facility operators?
So, in the green section on the far-right side, is the events and capital improvements for each one of the facility operators. So, there's an addition, out of that $212,000 of special events in the pie, 900, or 99,000, 370,000 of it is going to a facility operator.
Councilor Cook?
So, Airbnb, we're in negotiations right now to be able to pull the TOT. What's the anticipated?
Actually, those, well, Deputy City Manager Duncan is coming down. Those negotiations have concluded. I don't know, Casey, if we have an estimate?
Just based on limited information that we have at this point, we're expecting it to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 to 100,000.
And do we have locations for, I get, what I'm trying to figure out is, would it make sense with Airbnb and the locations, to improve the facilities located around Airbnb, or to use that to expand some of the, would that just go into equal distribution among the pie? Would it be its own separate pie? How would that work?
No, it's accounted for, and what you see is the, excuse me, the anticipated revenues for the fiscal year.
Okay. So, it's just a part of it?
Across the pie.
Okay.
Okay. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. You were talking about how, and I can see when you, the grant funding to operators with the green on the end, you know, that's almost equal 459, in fact, in government work, it is equal, 459 to 458,000, $100,000. So, and I see that the proposal for next year, for the same group, you know, same accumulation of the cultural people, is $600,000. Is that because that's what you anticipate TOT funds coming in, and if they still get the same percentage?
So, we project that that would be a level amount that would be able to be funded in the future.
Okay, so, there's nothing, it's the same sort of formula you were using in 17, 18 to come up with almost 460,000, and using that same formula, this time you come up with about 600,000. with about 600,000.
You have more, you have more incentive.
Yeah, because we're getting more money out of TOT.
Bigger pie.
Bigger pie. Yeah, the revenues have increased.
Yeah, that's, that's all I was asking. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Councilor Kaser.
Thanks. So the 25% to Travel Salem, is that council policy?
Yes.
It's SRC 37. It was a motion by councilors and then turned into SRC 37.
It's actually codified.
It's codified.
Okay. All right.
Any, okay, do you want to go ahead, then? Are you done?
All right. All right.
Sorry. Questions?
Not yet, almost. So, you know, like I said before, the, this is, this here is the current budget for the current year, and the impact of the 15% would be, would impact heavily all the other organizations or other parts of the funding within the city that don't have a fixed allocation dollar amount with them. And to be clear, the, the request from, what you see here as 15% would be 15% of the budget expenditures, and it is 666,525, which is 15% of the, also 15% of the revenues. But what that, in this scenario, it includes special events and capital improvements. But the request from the facility operators is that that dollar amount would be strictly for the nine of the facility operators, not including any special events or grants, any other type of grants. So then the question would become is what happens to the grant, the grant program if this 15% allocation was made fixed? You know, some of the things that we should consider or talk about is the flexibility that is allowed currently for us as a city, as, and as councilors, to be able to fund projects such as the Minto Island Trails, or to future needs such as when the Salem Rotary's new amphitheaters built in the Riverfront Park. Those kind of, the flexibility is what you want to be able to have, and if you provide a fixed allocation, you're going to lose that flexibility. And it's fine in years when revenues are increasing, but it becomes increasingly more dramatic and harder to accomplish the, your needs or meet your needs when revenues are decreasing. And we may be coming out of the economic downturn, but we also don't know, you know, currently, when we take a look at the, the revenues that have come in year-to-date, we're at 2.45% through March on TOT revenues, which is only $61,000 more than what we received this time last year. So there's, there's a bit of concern as to, as far as going forward, what the revenue projections are going to be able to come in then.
Councilor Cook.
Thank you. I, I guess I have a concern that for the people living here that use the facilities, I understand the TOT funds are used when people come and stay in the hotels, their tourism, people from outside the area coming in and using the facilities. But it would seem that we have a cost when those events are hosted. I know that's not included here, but I'm thinking of the impact on the general budget. Yay, it's great if we have a big event that tons of people come from out of town in, but that's also an expense on us to be able to, or how, how is that incorporated when you're looking at events to fund? How, how does that play out in other expenses that would be involved in that? I'm just thinking of large events that use, like the destination parks where we have cleanup, we have security, we have all of these other things.
So you're wondering what kind of impact the city has with these types of events that do come in, what other impact is there to the city?
Right.
On cleaning up and making sure that the park is restored? Yeah, that's, that is definitely part of the costs.
And that's not covered in TOT as far as, like, getting it back to leave no trace?
Mark Beckdel from Parks can, can answer that much better.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilors. Mark Beckdel, Public Works Operations Manager. A very significant portion of the amount of TOT funds that goes to parks goes to operating those destination or tourism-related parks to the tune of anywhere of 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars a year. So for example, if we have several large festivals at Riverfront Park during the summer, a lot of that funding that goes to the operations part goes to cleanup, rehabilitating the turf between events, all the different operations of the park during events and after.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Does that also include the police? And did, were any of these funds used with the eclipse and the park cost there?
We did not use any TOT funds for the eclipse, per se, other than the, the impact of Riverfront Park during the eclipse, or Bush's pasture park, any of those destination or tourism parks where we had people staying. Obviously, part of the operations of that park was, was funded by TOT. So we didn't have a separate eclipse allocation, but those destination parks, you know, we accommodated the visitors that we had for the eclipse with that, through that budget. The, the police are not funded through TOT funds.
I should add, too, though, that if and when there are events that might create concern and a need for additional service from our police department, we have permits, whether it's event permits, or one-time licensing permits that are then required and coordinated as a review through code compliance, community development, and the police department. So if and when those needs do come up, we make sure through those reviews that, say, security is provided by the vendor at the event, or that through a permit, we coordinate some sort of response plan if and when it's necessary for one of those events. Noise permits, that's another one that comes up with some of these. And so if and when there are other effects or impacts to the city, those things are captured through other permitting processes as well.
Mr. Beckdel, I want to check on this, too. Do we not charge a fee to use our parks by some of these big events?
We do. We do, Mayor.
And that's used, then, to pay for some of these costs, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Good. So they're paying for themselves to some extent. I just wanted to make clear there are several revenue streams.
We receive permit, permit and fees as well, yeah.
Councilor Anderson.
If you could, could you go back, Chris, to the fiscal year 17, 18 pie chart? No, the grant budget pie chart, not the total budget. Please. Okay, so as I read this, your allocation method chart, there is 144,000 special event groups, and of that, the cultural people ended up getting about 100,000. Is that correct?
The 100,000 is for the current 18, 19.
Yeah.
But, so you would, you'd be needing to look at is this chart here, out of that 212,000, 99,000 of that was for facility operators.
Okay, so, so the special events grants are half and half, about?
You have nine facility operators that have the potential to apply for a special event.
And they could, technically, they could get all of it, but they, last time, they got about two-thirds of it, I would guess, are their proposed. Okay, then that's, that just leads into my other question, because if you look at what was proposed, the total grant funding for the TOT grant budget was 600,000, and under the 15% impact, it's 666,000. So I look at that and say, that's only a 66,000 increase, but what you're saying, it actually becomes more than that because nobody else would be available to get the special events grant other than people in that group.
Correct. So this reflects the, the allocation of 666,000 just to the nine facility operators.
Okay.
So it does not include any special events or
For somebody outside.
Or anybody else, including themselves.
Okay.
Because they want to use just that amount for their operating.
Then the mayor said that people can come into this group of nine and gave some examples. Can people or groups move out of that group of nine? And if so, how does that happen? Let's not say they go out of business, but let's say, could there be some other way to say, gee, we do not think you are
We don't want all that money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or we don't want to give you that money.
See if anyone will raise their hand to get out of there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't know. I mean, because, you know, who decides who's in the group and who decides who's out of the group is my point.
Yeah. Okay, there.
Yeah.
It is, it is rare for, you know, organizations to say, hey, I don't want any more grant money from you.
No, no, I know that. I'm talking about, do we do that, or can we do that?
Can we, can we sure up who receives, identify who, who the facility operator is?
Yeah.
That's, you know, guided by the, the definition and council policy is, council policy C1 as far as what a facility operator is.
Okay, so if they meet the council criteria, they're in.
As long as they can prove that they are a facility operator, yes.
Now, my follow-up question to that is, right now, that money is out.
Or I should say, or I should say, as long as they have the right to operate as a facility operator in their location.
Okay. Now, my follow-up question is, they're all getting an equal amount. Is there any way, and I know Mr. Wright and I had that kind of discussion in another meeting, so I'm wondering, Norm, if you could talk to that issue as to, how do you look at these, you know, on how you allocate among that amount of money that's there? With the subsection of that is, sometimes when grants are given, the grants cannot be more than X% of somebody's capital budget. And do we have that criteria, and is that something to look at? Let's say we're funding 80% of one group and only 20% of another group. You know, how does that, that fairness and equity go to that?
So, so our conversation was, was particularly around different methodologies for how to distribute this money, once it is determined that, that money that's budgeted is for, in this case, the facility operators, or in another case, the events. In both instances right now, well, particularly with the facility operators, you can see that our methodology, and this is getting in the weeds a bit, is we find a score based on what the board assesses on the merits of a given application. That score then translates into a percentage share that goes to that 100% on the second column, and then from there, that percentage share gets straightly, directly distributed into what is really a grant award to any of the facility operators that really only fluctuates by about $4,000. So the best
Excuse me, they're essentially the same. I mean, look at the percentage there.
Right.
Just under 10 to just under 12.
Right.
You know, so
And so, so one notion is that if there was a legitimate need, or more importantly, an application that had a great deal of merit that warranted more funds as a result, then there could be different rationale for how this money is distributed. Instead of an equal share with the given $4,000 of variance, it could be that all of these facility operators are given a base amount, that is to cover their core operating expense, and that there would be, that would be one portion of the, of that particular piece of the fund, and that another portion could be as large as desired, could then go towards the highest applications in terms of their merit and their outcomes and their potential benefit for tourism. And that would then allow for certain outstanding applications to get significantly more as a result, while also still covering the base operating costs of the remainders of those within the fund. That's one possible way.
Really want to pursue this idea?
I just want to see if he wants to. I mean, is that, is that the way it's done? I mean, in other places.
Well, that's
If I may, councilors, you have staff's recommendation. You had that in January.
Right.
So if council wants to change that direction, tonight is the night to provide that, that consensus, and we'd come back with specific policy changes to accomplish that direction.
I, I, I think probably Nanki and I would both caution that you start messing with these formulas, it, it really does suddenly cause a lot of dislocation for people. That's the only concern I've got. And I'm just talking about what you're talking about here, not your 15%, or the 15% issue. But when you start looking at these base funding and you start weighing the importance of one
It's a much more complicated process.
It's a very, very complicated.
Yeah, and I could see how it might make for some hard feelings at some point.
Well, as soon as you suggested it, I began looking back here at the group that's waiting to hear what you think.
Well, yeah, I will tell you, Mr. Mayor, it wasn't my idea particularly.
Oh, I thought it was.
Yeah, no. I'm just exploring the possibilities. If I could, just ask one more follow-up question, and this is another discussion that we had, Norm, in terms of the flexibility versus the predictability. And I was all in favor of the tourism Salem, Travel Salem, excuse me, sorry, forgetting the 25%, and I, I still am. And so just philosophically, could you talk about one group getting a percentage and one other group not getting a percentage, also with the flexibility issues in mind?
Well, to go back to something that Councilor Nanki mentioned earlier in telling the story of previous years working with this fund, the quote that I wrote down that I thought was important was that there were times where something strange would come up, whether that was a facility, you know, capital expense or anything else of the sort. Going down a road of more of a fixed percentage removes the ability, the flexibility, the option, to deal with those strange things that come up in previous years. And so as the city manager mentioned, we currently have a recommended budget, we currently have a recommended approach. That approach does, per council direction, provide a 25% fixed allocation for a part of the fund. But to have the other 25% as flexible gives us the ability and the optionality to take care of those strange things that come up, were it to be the needed repairs for Minto Island, or were it to be for other capital equipment needs, such as a boiler that would go out at Deepwood. Whatever the case may be, your trade-offs here would be, as the mayor even said, pretty significant for something that's more fixed. Whereas the current recommended approach is a flexibility that allows you to address those unforeseen needs as they arise.
Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't here when the 25% decision was made, so I don't fully understand the, the issues that went into that. But the thing that confuses me, it seems like, just from my perspective, we started to unlevel the playing field when we gave one particular entity a fixed amount, and nobody else got the fixed amount. And now we have a recommendation, or I guess a proposal, to consider another group at a fixed amount. But yet then we still have all of these other entities that aren't going to get a fixed amount. So it seems like we're just taking that, that playing field more out of level. In my way of looking at it, it either needs to be open, maximum flexibility for staff to decide what's the best, and staff and council to decide what's the best direction, or to where we don't, where nobody has a percentage, or where everybody has a percentage. Then it's very predictable. Because right now, it feels like we're squeezing some. If we, if we carve out this entity, and this entity, and this entity, then the other folks, you know, and I mean the city, the parks, other entities, they don't have that opportunity. And I guess I'm having a hard time reconciling that. So I would love to hear your thoughts on that.
Our analysis, if you'll go to the slide, two slides down, I think, Chris, or maybe it's three, the 15% scenario, shows that, yes, any fixed amount, as you can see here, further diminishes the slices, if you will, for the other participants in this fund. So, yeah, further, we, this is not our recommendation, we do not recommend this. We recommend our current approach, as has been presented earlier, because of, again, these sort of trade-offs and that, that loss of flexibility moving forward. So I'll just let the analysis itself speak for itself.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Nanki.
Thank you. Just for Councilor Hoy's concern on that, since you weren't here then, the argument that was made is, and, and as we've seen, that pie has gotten bigger, and the argument is that Travel Salem, then their budget is dependent on how well they do. So if they're, because all that revenue comes from heads and beds, if, if they don't do a good job marketing, they will get less money. If, if they do a wonderful job, they get more money, and so does the rest of the pie. So that was the rationale for that, because they're actually bringing those people in to generate the revenue.
Councilor McCoy.
Adding to Councilor Nanki's talk on what we did here around a couple of years ago, three, and when it was, a couple of things. One, and I would preface out, I was on the Travel Salem Board both before I became a councillor, and then I have continued on in my role as a councillor. They were caught in an arms race with Portland and Eugene. They were caught in an arms race with Portland and Eugene and Bend, all travel somethings, Travelane County, Travel Portland, Travel Bend. Those folks get a bigger allocation, their tot, it's usually 30. And so, they had bigger staffs, they had more marketing dollars, and frankly, we couldn't compete with the funding where it was at. And it was going up and down, it wasn't stable, so trying to budget and try to plan ahead was getting real difficult, when it might be 23 next year, instead of 23 and a half or 24. So, the argument was, let's, we don't need 30, but we need a stable spot, so we picked 25, which gives the opportunity to, gives the staff the opportunity to plan in the future. And also, they live and die by the sword. They gotta, they gotta deliver if they're gonna, you know, if they're gonna continue to support the staff they've developed and the programs they've developed. And I would say, it's worked. The tot numbers are up dramatically. They were up below three when I came on the council, and they're over four now, headed for 4.4, I see, next year is the estimate. So, it's delivered, because they've got enough staff, that they've got somebody marketing sports, bringing sports events in here. Witness the tournament that needed the tennis courts to be resurfaced, for example. They've developed all kinds of other programs that make it attractive to house in Salem and go out and explore the wine country, or bike, or, you know, do the things that they do. So, it's a, it's a direct result of us stabilizing that, and the economy, and their job, growing the number, so they could get enough staff to compete with the other folks in the state.
I'd add to that, too. We're also seeing increased activity around additional hotel rooms downtown and rooms in the community. We were hitting capacity in terms of available rooms, hence Airbnb made sense to add that kind of possibility. But this is, this is becoming a real tourist destination, and it, a lot of it has to do with a long concerted effort to get there. It's really been a lot of work. And just thinking about the parks, I'm just thinking about that hazel green property, that 45 acres, that wheel is very likely to have top funding in it, I think. It'll become a major attraction out there. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's great to hear, but I'm still wondering, I mean, we have this request in front of us, and this was brought by the partners to...
What request?
The request for the 15% funding.
Do I have a copy of that request?
Well, I guess it came from us as council to review it, but there was testimony...
I just don't have a copy of the request here.
Yeah, they said, one of the, one of the handout there, just not to the previous request that was made from them.
And so, I mean, it sounds like, from what Mr. Nader was saying, is that we have an assessment that's coming through, because in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, what would cause someone to make this request? Why would we say we want to have a fixed percentage? And it sounds like, from the assessment, we'll be able to see if there's maybe a large capital issue or an anticipated issue coming up for financing, that people would say, hey, we need to have more of this fund coming from tot. And it does make me wonder, are there barriers in reporting some of those issues? What those barriers would be, and then what metrics we're using to kind of track how the funds are distributed and how they're used, what metrics we're using right now?
I did find the request, it was part of the additions presented to us at the last minute tonight. Okay, just wanted to make sure I hadn't missed something here. You want to answer, did you get an answer for her?
So, reiterate your question.
So, we have the request in front of us.
The request, the 15% fixed allocation request?
Right. So, part of my thinking is, someone might make that request if they're anticipating a larger need than what can be covered in both the capital expenses or the allotted grant budget. So, I'm wondering what barriers there are to reporting to staff, if there's a deferred maintenance issue, or an anticipated improvement on some of the facilities or in some of the events, and then also what metrics we're using to track that these are funds used in the community. I mean, we talked about Travel Salem funds being tied directly to heads, people coming into the Salem metro area. What are the other metrics for the other facilities?
Okay, so what you're, so if I understand what you're asking correctly, is that you're wondering, you know, for these facility operators, if they have a need coming up, a capital improvement need, or whatever, what kind of opportunities do they have available to them? Either for funding, requesting funding from the city, obviously, they have the ability to apply for a capital improvement grant, which is available to them. There's other avenues outside of the city, or Travel Oregon, or there's other organizations that are grant funding for capital improvement projects, aside from what the city has. But as far as barrier to entry for, for the city, the existing nine facility operators, if they have that need, they can make that request in the next funding cycle.
When's the funding cycle open?
The funding cycle is open every October is when that funding cycle happens. So, it's an annual basis. They're all very familiar with when that cycle, that timeframe comes, and, you know, they have the ability to make that decision if they want to do a capital improvement, or if they want to do two special events instead of a capital improvement project.
I'd like to follow up on that, too. I think that's an interesting question. Can't, if one of the facilities, city-owned in particular, had a crisis or a problem, or, they'd be perfectly able to come to the council at any given moment and ask for assistance, and we could go into contingencies to assist them. Is that correct?
So, we do have contingency funding established in the tot grant.
How much is in there? It's contingency.
It's $120,000 is what we budget for contingency. That money would be available upon a request, if there was an emergency. Typically, the city, if it's a city-owned facility, if it is something that's required that the city does, whereas the facility operator isn't responsible for that improvement, then the city would take on that responsibility and fund that through a TOT, either budgeting for the following, budgeting it in the next budget cycle, or some method to make sure it got taken care of.
If they had an event opportunity unforeseen, like an eclipse, or whatever, I don't know, although you see those, I guess, hundreds of years in advance, but something, could they come in and ask for assistance through the council into that contingency fund?
You know, right now, the way the tot board has their cycle set up, all these facility operators are very familiar with the cycle and when those applications...
I'm thinking of an extra, outside of that process, because I happen to think that is the correct process, having chaired that committee for...
Have them come to the board.
But if something comes up, there is a flexibility in that tot fund, enough flexibility because of its being in the council's purview and the manager's purview, to go for assistance. If something real special's happening, I don't know.
Yes, I think the concern would be, you know, the definition of extraordinary, and does that establish a slippery slope for other extraordinary events that would arise outside of the well-established event consideration cycle and the event consideration by, by council's tot advisory board.
Well, I've seen it happen over a Christmas lights parade. We've gone to contingency at the last minute to keep...
Fourth of July?
Fourth of July has come up.
To answer your question more directly, Mr. Mayor, yes, that is...
I thought there might be buried in there, I guess. Councilor Anderson?
Listen, everything we do, every precedent we establish here starts us on a slippery slope. I mean, no matter what we do. I have a comment and then a question. The comment is, the stuff that Travel Salem does, it also redounds to the benefit of the cultural groups, because just like you're promoting the ball and fields and the other stuff, you promote, promote the cultural things we have here. So, again, that's kind of a rising tide raises all boats. My question is, there are certain parts of that, and I'm thinking specifically of the Bush House Museum, that is owned by the city, but it's, as I understand it, the salaries of the people who work there are paid for by these cultural organizations. And I'm wondering if there's some other way to maybe look at that particular situation and say, maybe that person might be, come under the city budget as opposed to under their budget.
What would the Friends of Bush House do, if you took this away from them?
Well, I don't know. I just know there has been that discussion in the past among some...
As city employees, you're thinking, or this... Be an interesting category. Look forward to that discussion.
Well, that's why we have a work session, to discuss issues. I'm not saying...
No, it is. It's an interesting idea. I look forward to the discussion. Okay, anyone else? All righty, very good. Well, if there's no further business... Public comment. Do any of you guys want to talk? Sandra, you want to get up there? I would like to hear from the chair of the Culture and Tourism Promotion Advisory Board, too, if you'd like to speak. Great, why don't you come on up? Let you beat Sandra up. Just a sec, Sandra, let me let hers.
Good evening. What all would you like to know? So, my name is Laura Agüero. I'm the executive director of a nonprofit here in town, the Oregon Symphony in Salem. I do not have a facility to operate, though I would like one, but that's a story for another day. So, I come at it from the viewpoint of special events, and therefore, I'm very sort of protective, shall we say, of the special events money. I love our facility operators. I was very much a fan for pushing to allocate more money to them, as much as we can, within the sum of our budget. And I feel like, as a board, we accomplished that this year. Last year, it was brought up, correct, Sandra? And so, she brought to our attention the last year, the year before, that they hadn't had a raise in their allocation in like 10 years, 13 years, something like that. She'll tell you. And then we were like, oh, wow, that kind of stinks. Do we have the money, Chris? And the answer was, maybe. And so, then we kind of just started scooching forward. In terms of a fixed allocation, hmm, I would proceed with caution. I think that if we have the money every year, this is just my own two cents, that we should award as much money as we can, both to the facility operators and to the special events. I don't know about fixing it, but I'm open to giving them as much money as we can. So, if we say, yes, they can have 15%, and we have the money to do so, great, but I just don't know about the fix. My other thought is, just to kind of, I don't know, I guess I could bring this up at a board meeting, but what about if we do do the fix, but then say they can't do special events? What would that look like? So that they're not dipping into special events. So, facility operators could have that, but then they wouldn't have the opportunity to get into that special events money. Yeah, those are my thoughts.
Great. Well, thank you very much for chairing this board. I know, I know the job, and it's a very difficult one at times, so thank you so much, you and your committee. Okay, anyone else? Ross, you're first.
No, I just signed up.
You just wanted to let me know you're here?
Yeah, I thought that was the sign in.
Ah, okay.
There you go.
Good. Roger Williams, same idea? Alicia Bay? I apologize, Sandra, I didn't know I had this. Oh, okay.
We are used to signing in. We are a very obedient crowd, if we are anything.
Alicia, go ahead.
So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I really appreciate the opportunity to listen in to this conversation and to hear the different thoughts on the TOT funding. Just from the perspective of Gilbert House Children's Museum, the additional funds will be greatly appreciated this year. Every fund, every bit of funds that we get are carefully allocated and used towards programs for the children in our community and those visiting. We will, we anticipate having over 100,000 people visit Gilbert House Children's Museum, and we believe that we make excellent use of the beautiful buildings, which are Rockenfield Parish House and the Gilbert House, and also the privilege of being in Riverfront Park. One of the things that I saw taking place, as being new to the TOT funding, was that some of the events that had been funded in the past, and the value placed on the cultural facilities seemed to be slipping among the Cultural and Tourism Promotional Advisory Board, which was part of our request. So, this year, seeing an increase in money allocated, as well as that second-tier allocation, was greatly appreciated. We wouldn't be worth our salt for our organizations if we didn't advocate for them, and advocate for additional funding that would be used towards programs and benefiting our community and those that visit. And so, that's why we have respectfully asked for this discussion, and greatly appreciate council taking time to understand the tot funding better and to move forward with that. Councilor Cook?
Thank you, Alicia. So, you said 100,000 visitors this year?
Yes.
Is what you're anticipating for 2018? How many field trips do you routinely have?
So, we, right now, through the months of April and May, will have a field trip essentially every day. We, of that 100,000, we anticipate about 8,000 of those will be children visiting on field trips.
And what's the furthest away a school has come for a field trip for you?
Two hours.
Okay, on the bus?
On a bus, and over 70% of our field trips are outside of Salem Kaiser School District.
What's the membership right now of the Gilbert House?
$95.
No, I mean, how many members do you have?
Oh, how many members? $2,500.
$2,500. And out of those members, how many are on a reduced membership because of being Medicaid recipients?
Yes, about 15%.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Laura Agnew? Okay. Claudia Borson? Yeah. Claudia's here, okay? Scott, are you there?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you very much. I am a habitual Culture Promotion, Tourism Advisory Board member, so I was, I was on the board for seven years, and had a two-year hiatus, and then came back on. And I'm grateful to be back on. I didn't think I'd miss it, but I really started missing it after about a year. So, Councilor Hoy, I was part of the group that worked with the council and the city manager to retain that 25% allocation for Travel Salem, that was very eloquently explained by Steve and Brad about the, the end game is to make sure that, from a marketing standpoint, that fund is growing. Destination marketing organization like Travel Salem, having that assurance that they're getting a set percentage is a big deal in their playing field, as Steve had talked about. And just from being able to take advantage of opportunities based on what the hotels are telling them, we're anticipating for occupancy next year, for the next five years, you know, so that they can be planning ahead and looking for opportunities that make sense to help keep Salem on the map. But as a, as a hotel operator, I manage the Grand Hotel Downtown, we market, we try to send our guests to the, to the facilities, we try to highlight the activities that are going on, because we want people to stay another night. You know, they may be coming in for business, or they may be coming in for a wedding, but if we can, through Travel Salem's marketing efforts and the, and the great events that are being put on all over town, if we can keep people enticed to come and stay for an additional night, or come back because they had such a good time previously, that's, that's how the fund continues to grow. The, the idea behind the, the funding for the cultural facilities, I think, might be getting lost. I don't believe that the Culture Promotion, Tourism Advisory Board is necessarily supporting, is tasked with supporting the nine facility operators, but we've encouraged them, through my first seven years, and still, to attain diversified funding. Travel Salem has diversified funding. They don't get just funding from, from the tot board, they wouldn't survive. You know, there's, there's additional funding that they get from, from the county, other communities, through membership, through the wine tour, wine license plate funding, et cetera. And so, they, they have diversified. And so, we've tried to use that model to help encourage our tour, our operators to do the same thing. Don't be dependent upon the city's TOT, look for other revenue sources, and, and just be business, good, good business people. Nonprofit doesn't mean that you, you don't have to be smart and agile.
Ms. Snyder, I had a question on, I meant to ask Alicia, maybe you know, what is generally the percentage of leverage going on here? What's the leverage look like? Was city funds going to any of our programs? But are, is there a lot of grant money coming in? Is there, I was real impressed hearing how many members at $95... Is there, I, I was real impressed hearing how many members at $95 a person, or whatever the membership, per membership, 2,500. That's a good fundraising piece.
It is, yeah.
What does Bush House do to raise money?
Sandra or Ross would probably be much better. I, I know that some of our, and I can't remember which counselor had mentioned it, but, and maybe it was Tom, some of the facilities have quite large operating budgets.
Yeah.
And I, I don't see the Elsinore here, but I think they've got one of the largest, but it's because they bring in huge events and they, they have to pay for those.
Right.
So it's, it's not really a fair measurement.
Okay.
You know, I, I'm just throwing out a figure. Let's say it's a million dollars at the Elsinore. They might only make $10,000 because they pay out these entertainers, and so it's, it's really tight, even whatever their, their revenue, there's a significant dollar cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Fish? Nope, here?
Okay.
I'd like Steve to get, raise your hand if you're a talk.
Well, I, I won't recognize everyone. Yvonne?
Here.
Kay?
I'll skip.
Marie? Oops, I'm sorry. Marie, you're after Yvonne.
I'm Yvonne Putzy with Deepwood Museum and Gardens, and I'd like to say thank you to everyone for taking the time tonight. I think that regardless of any decision made, the time spent is so appropriate when we look at the huge sum of money that is in this fund, so I appreciate that. And I think that we've all learned through this process. I know that I have, having come into this position about a year and a half ago, this has been a real learning experience to help me gain an understanding of all the things that are pulling from these funds. As far as the question on diversified sources of income that we have, I know that at Deepwood Museum and Gardens, we do a number of different things, including apply for other grants, and that can be local things, it can be national grants, a big variety of them, depending on what need is out there for any given project and what might help us meet that project. We also do rentals at Deepwood Museum and Gardens. As many of you may know, we have a number of weddings over the course of the summer, but we also have a balance that we keep so that we aren't constantly being closed for an event, but balancing when we're open and when we're closed, because that's important, that everyone can use our gardens. We also work with things like Wine and Jazz at Deepwood, and those events not only are fundraisers for us, but they're also another reason for people to come in from outside of the community and to add a depth of life here in the community and add more enrichment in the community. We also all look at ways that we can do free activities, such as Bush House Museum and Deepwood working together at the holiday time to have open houses that are free to the public. So it is a, very much a business operation that we're all running, and we really are all focusing on the ways that we can be most effective. And we are all really trying to be the best stewards we can of these properties, that we manage to make Salem a better place for everyone, and that's truly why, as business people, we are coming forward, saying, can we take another look at this and see what makes sense? And appreciate that you've all opened us up to do that. And I also want to express appreciation for the City of Salem staff. At Deepwood, we receive great support, and I can't imagine how we would do much of what we do without the support that we have, so I do want to make sure that, that is recognized.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you. So have you seen an increase? I know our population in Salem has increased in the last five to 10 years. Are you also seeing an increase in the number of, I don't know if you track visitors, obviously you would track facility rentals. Are you seeing a change in the frequency of use with Deepwood?
We are.
And the way in which people use the facilities?
We are, and we're also trying, one of the things I've focused on a lot over the past year and a half is just creating greater awareness. It's heartbreaking if someone says to me here in Salem, oh, where's Deepwood? You know, it's, it's one of those things that I want to make sure everyone always knows about Deepwood and, and that there is an awareness. We're also doing things at Deepwood, such as we have paired with a number of attractions from the coast and from the, and from Portland, so that we have a reciprocal arrangement, so that we're bringing their members during the month of March to Deepwood, and our members can then go to their attractions during the course of the year. So we're trying to find things like that, that we can do for reciprocal benefits.
I believe that's similar to what Omsi has with the Gilbert House, as far as children's museums are concerned?
Yes.
I see. So how does that change the requirements for the facility, if there's an increased usage or increased demand? Does that, I'm just thinking if, I'm throwing, I don't know what the equivalent would be in my house, if we're, I don't know, constantly getting stains on our clothes, our clothes would wear out faster.
There is, there's more demand as far as, as far as staff time, and we have, we've actually, at Deepwood, to be more cost-effective, we've actually lowered the staff count since I got there. We're trying to be more efficient and do more with the staff we have, but at the same time, there is a greater pull on that staff, so we're having to be, as any good business does, really efficient at the hours that we put in and how we use them. We're also looking at more at how we can utilize volunteers and engage the community more in our, in our operations, so that people feel more a part of it, and then are stepping forward. But it definitely does take a toll. It takes a toll on the facility itself, things like, something as simple as the carpeting, and having to look at, how do you, you know, do you get a new grant to get that funded? So there are always wear and tear issues. Thankfully, as a city facility, we do get the benefit, as a city-owned property, of having the park support in our grounds, so that makes a tremendous impact for us.
So you brought up the carpet, if I may, but you're a city-owned facility. Is the carpet on you, or do you just put in a request and say, hey, the carpet needs to be replaced, we're a city-owned facility, you take care of that?
Something like the carpet would be, there would be something that Friends of Deepwood would take care of, because that's more of an aesthetic thing, not a structural element. If the, the boiler, which came up earlier, if that went out, that would be something that the city would be looking at funding. So we have a partnership and things that we, we work together on, and there are certain elements that are the Friends of Deepwood's responsibility and elements that are the city's. But the, the greatest way that I think that, to understand it, is the structural things are city elements, and things within the home, and more of the, I don't know, the lipstick on it, would be more the Friends of Deepwood.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there a boiler?
Boiler's working.
Go ahead. Marie, did you want to speak?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Marie Bradford Blevins, and I'm the Executive Director of Salem's Riverfront Carousel, and I do want to thank everyone here for having the conversation about what we have requested. I've seen a lot of growth in the carousel since I have been the director. We, there's a lot that goes on at Riverfront Park. I mean, with all the events that happen in the park, we take an active part with those events, maybe more from default, because we are there, and we do, do our best to work with the events that, that are in the park. They do come to us, you know, and ask us a lot of questions, and so we do our best to help them out, because we do want to represent the carousel and the city well. Last year, we had, I'm guessing, it was about 145,000 riders that came to the carousel. We have one of our programs where we do give complimentary rides to anyone with a disability. That was about probably 9,000 rides that we gave out. Someone that is disabled, they can have up to five rides. We are a little different, I would say, from the other eight facilities, even though we are in a city-owned building, but we are responsible for everything to do with that building. So if the roof blew off tomorrow, I would probably be calling Chris and see what's that contingency fund, to be able to replace that roof. We're also responsible for the grounds around the carousel, so even though there is funding that goes to Riverfront Park for the maintenance, we are still responsible for the grounds around the park. So if there's a big event in the park, and they trash our, our beds, we're still responsible for maintaining those, buying the bark dust to put down, for weeding, I mean, for all of that. And the one good thing is that we do work with the courts for, I think they've changed it from community service workers, so we do have them, sometimes on a daily basis, that they will, we do send them out, you know, to help us for some of our maintenance. So we, I think all of us, as Yvonne had said, we do run our operation as a business, and we are looking to, for diversified funds. So with the carousel, which has helped us within the last couple of years, is the sponsoring of new animals, so that has really helped us with the additional income. So to sponsor a new animal, it's $15,000, and so within the last couple of years, you know, we've been able to sponsor almost 10 animals, so that has really helped us. So we do go out and look, well, I know the carousel, and I'm sure the rest of them, we do go out to look to diversify funding, you know, for the things that, that we need. So that's probably about it, but like I said, we do appreciate having this conversation here, and I'm sure with TOT and with the council, that they do want to do the best for us, so thank you.
Was Santa at the carousel funded this year?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you. Last year, if you guys didn't know, our mayor rode the train in with Santa, and so that was probably one of the biggest crowds.
He mentioned to me several times his program wasn't funded.
It was probably the biggest crowd we had.
That's great.
With, I don't know, it was because the mayor was on the train, but it was the biggest crowd that we had.
The mayor was not the draw.
With the arrival of Santa, so it was, it was a funny event.
How could this be? Counselor Mayor.
Thank you. So have you noticed an increase in ridership since the opening of the bridge?
Yes.
And how has that affected your staffing and budget levels?
Probably for budget levels, I mean, coming into work now, I mean, the parking lot is full, so I can arrive at 8:30, quarter to 9:00, the parking lot is full, and I'm sure it's from, you know, people walking in the park or going across the bridge. I've noticed the increase in foot traffic in the morning from people wanting to come into the carousel to use the restrooms. They come in to use the restrooms, and I think overall, it has had an impact on the, on the carousel and the park.
And also, you'd mentioned that you have free rides for people. I also note that you have a lot, quite a few volunteers with the carousel.
Yes.
What's your volunteer numbers?
We have an average of active volunteers, probably about 85 to 90 that come in on a daily basis.
And how many of those volunteers, do they all provide staff unrolls, helping kids get set up on the horse, or running the snow cone?
Mainly, it is for our carvers and painters. We have volunteers that help run the carousel on the platform, and who sell tokens and who work in the gift shop.
And the funds from the gift shop all run the carousel?
Correct.
The proceeds go back?
Yes.
Great. Counselor Lewis.
Just a curiosity question. We, we heard about the bridge and how that has increased the activity at the carousel. Curious whether, when the ice rink was open, whether you noticed an increase, or, or did things stay the same as far as?
Oh, no, there was an increase. There was an increase in just in the level of activity in the park and the amount of people in the park, because typically that November, December, January, there's really no activities going on in the park besides the carousel. So I think it had a huge impact on the park and even on the riders, because either they would come and skate first for the skate session, and then come to the carousel, or vice versa. Come to the carousel, take a ride, and then go down to the ice skating rink.
Thanks.
I'm going to ask about birthday parties.
Yes.
And facilities there. How many birthday parties do you average each year, and has that also increased?
For our birthday parties, we had, oh gosh, probably, I'm trying to remember my, from my notes, we probably had close to about 7,000 people who had attended birthday parties. So during the summer, we're busy practically every day with birthday parties. This time of the year, it's only on weekends because kids are in school.
And that's a revenue source as well?
Yes, it is.
For the carousel?
Yes, the carousel, and then plus our annual events that we put on. Our annual events are no more than $5, unless they're, they're free.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you, Marie, very much.
Good evening, and thank you, everybody, for your time. It's kind of late on a Monday night, so very much appreciate the focus here. Still light. I'm just going to run through a few points that I picked up by way of clarifying in, in the discussions. The culturels do pay for use of the park. You pay through permits, you, we pay for security, we pay for the cleanup to the Parks Department, and so on. So just on, on a point of clarification there, that the use of the parks, that even Bush Park that's right outside our door, we, we pay for use of the park. And on events, event money isn't the same. Event money is passed through. For instance, we get an allocation of 10,000 for art fair as an event grant, and that goes straight through for marketing outside of Salem to bring people in. The other event allocation this year is, we don't have proper walls in the upstairs gallery, which is our primary gallery, so we're getting museum-quality, repositionable walls up in the upstairs gallery, because that's appropriate for the kind of exhibitions we do up there. So none of that comes to operating, with supporting the organization, it's straight passed through. And in fact, we attracted other grant money to help with the walls, so I, just to, there's a, so you know, adding it in is one thing, isn't really helping us, because we're really are talking about operating, and that's the challenge, to be, you know, 365 days a year, we are operating. So the event money, just to be clear, is pass-through money. And the event, anyway, okay. So there've been two, just something I want to just note here, that some time back, you had to be, A, a nonprofit, or B, cultural, benefit cultural. The criteria has widened, and this has been part of why we get so many more events coming in, because now we're getting sports, sport events covered, some for-profits getting covered, and so on. So just as a, just another background note here, is when I first started at Salem Art Association, you had to be a cultural, and you had to be nonprofit, in, in terms of how that was allocated. So now it's been allocated very much more broadly, so.
So like Hoopla would be?
Like Hoopla, yes, that was a financially viable, independently-run organization, event operation, that, and Byte'n Brew also gets an allocation now, so that kind of thing. So that's sort of, as in the case of Santa, in a way pushed out some of the culturels from receiving funding, although you did in the end, right? So just as another, just background note.
Do you, you say you pay to use Bush Park.
Yes.
Remember how much you're paying?
Oh, gosh, I can pull the receipts and send it to you.
No, I'm just curious, what, to lease the use of it or whatever.
I think that one city fee is in the region of 8,000, and then we pay for security separately. We pay for.
Who pays for the fences and the collection of tickets?
Yes, and, and the ambulances, the, the medical onsite support, the park cleanup, all that kind of thing is factored into the art fair budget.
I would be really interested, it's when this budget comes up, to see what you're paying for use of the.
Okay. I can, I can email that information to you.
Or just bring it in when you testify.
Okay. When I testify, okay. So, so this, this 15% request is really about that operating, that, that operating budget that all of us have to face every single day, is how do you keep the doors open? With Salem Art Association, there's no entry fee, so we can't charge people to walk in. Bush House Museum does have an entry, an entry fee, and I can answer that question, I think someone asked about Bush House funding in a moment. So the event or special circumstances doesn't really help, it's every day is keeping up with your budget. And the, the feeling was, quite honestly, we came out of the feeling that the, the tide is rising, has been rising, in the TOT funds. Huge amount of success was being reflected in the, the bringing, as, as you say, bringing tourists to Salem. We are the destinations that they come to, not only the culturels. But you don't come to a city unless there's something you're going to. The cultural tourism is a very important aspect of tourism, and by and large, cultural tourists stay longer, they spend more money, and they spend it on local goods and services. They're less inclined to go to McDonald's, they're more inclined to go to Bentley's or Amadeus, or Ritter's, or whatever. So it, it was a sense. or Amadeus, or Ritter's, or whatever. So, it was a sense of that there has been enormous improvement in the amount of tax revenues collected, but the culturals weren't seeing any of this. And that's where this has come from, that it gives the culturals a bit of a stake. They're also attracting tourists. And it gives them a bit of a stake in their own success. So they're part of generating the revenue, and they're wanting to have a little bit more consideration when revenues go up, that they go up too, rather than stay static over the period of time.
I recall they do go up, though. They just aren't going up at the same way as-
The very last, this last allocation that's not yet approved, it's gone up a bit there, by 1%, I think it was. But for the previous years, it hadn't gone up. It had never exceeded $440,000, I think it was, in the staff analysis.
Can you correct me? I've always been told that the State Capitol is the number one tourist attraction in Salem. Is that not true?
I don't know.
Oh.
I'd be very interested to know that. But I think that-
I'm just curious, because what attracts people to Salem? Besides kids at Willamette, grandkids being born, and the State Capitol?
Well, I think that the data shows that cultural tourism is a very strong draw.
Okay.
And Salem is lucky to have such a strong cultural infrastructure. You've got all these facilities. Yes, it's hard to keep the doors open, but they're there, and they're generating economic prosperity on other levels as well. That concept of the livability of a city. And in your very thoughtful address, you were talking about the huge investments that have been made in Salem. Part of the assessments of money that's coming from Seattle or wherever else is, is this a community, a livable, you know, they rank cities with, in terms of their livability.
Arts are fundamental.
Arts are fundamental to that. So the repercussions is tourism, but it's also pass tourism.
Yeah.
It's to the very economic fabric of the city. It's community building. It's, you know, it's very fundamental. We, as I say, we can't charge for people to walk in the door. In terms of diversifying funding, in the next cycle, I think it's 4% of our budget comes from TOT. So, yeah, we do, yes, we wouldn't have-
How much extra would you get with the 15%? In terms of just dollars and cents, I'm sure you figured it out.
If it was, well, it depends on tax collections. It's not the total TOT budget, because there's a fund balance being carried.
They were showing $600,000 or something like that.
Right. And so, so-
What would that increase?
Between nine organizations, that divide by nine would be, you're the math guy.
About 76,000?
But divide by nine. Or by, if you divide by 10, it's 66,000. So there'll be some a little under, some a little above, because of the ranking. So it would be around that mark. But right now-
You currently receive how much? And under this, you would receive how much?
So, under the, in terms of the next budget coming up?
Yeah, if you got the 15%.
We, on the budget coming up, it's 43,000 was allocated Salem Art Association.
Okay.
And we ranked at the top. So it goes from 43, and then all the other levels are down to, and the bottom levels, $35,000.
You'd get $35,000 more?
No. It's ranked.
No, but how much would you get for the art association?
Help me, someone.
About 70,000.
Huh?
About 70,000.
So that would be 7% of our budget. If this went through, I'm trusting Scott.
So you would go, Sandra, you would go from where to where again? Just say what, I just want to understand what the magnitude of change is, that's all. You get currently, or you get in the next budget, how much?
43,000.
And you would go to 77, or?
70,000, thereabouts, maybe.
Okay, okay.
So then it would be 7% of our budget. We're around about the million.
But I'm just thinking in the dollar. I just wanted to understand.
Yeah, understand.
It's a pretty substantial change.
It is substantial. You know, it helps enormously. You know, we are struggling. Our budget hasn't moved, except for the renovation, the annex, and the elevator. Other than that, our budget has been static. And we've had to come up with really creative ways to keep our programming going. And we do with our staff. I don't personally have an assistant. I have a little sliver of somebody. But I don't actually have an-
Certainly.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
But we make things work.
I just wanted to understand what it was gonna be like. Counsel McCoy?
So, when you were, the numbers you just exchanged with the mayor did not include special events dollars?
No.
And so how much did you get in special events dollars this year?
$10,000's the most you can apply for. So-
At a time, you can apply for more than one $10,000, right?
No. No. Once.
You have two events.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, because we used to do the smaller events.
I think you had $20,000.
Okay. So we had, yes, and one was for the repositionable walls in the museum, and the others for marketing and art fair.
Well, I guess my point would be, you receive $63,000, under the current scheme, and you're asking for 67. So.
I'm just distinguishing between events and operating, because events are pass-through dollars. We don't hold on to them. They go straight out again.
Okay, I don't agree with that statement either. If you've got $10,000, and you spend it on art fair marketing, that's $10,000 less dollars that you would've had to spend of your own money. So frankly, that drops to the bottom line for you. That $10,000 isn't there, you're spending $10,000 somewhere else in your budget, and reducing your income by $1,000.
Or we don't-
That is not pass-through.
We don't do as much marketing. You know, we would drop our money. Those are choices.
Wherever that money goes, you're gonna have it, you have to make up for it. So the fact that you do have it, when you turn a profit, that's value.
Counsel Holly?
Thank you. Can I ask a clarifying question of staff, based on the information you just provided?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Nider, I had understood you to say earlier that all of this went to nonprofits. But I think I understood the testimony just a moment ago, that actually some of this money goes to for-profits. Can you clarify that for me?
So, under Council Policy C1, there's one stipulation, that a for-profit could apply for a grant for an event only, for up to $2,000.
And do we typically give that, give those awards?
We do approximately four.
So about $8,000 goes out?
About $8,000 out of the $212,000.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is, this is Hoopla, gets $2,000, I think.
Hoopla gets actually more. Hoopla qualifies as a nonprofit organization, so they apply for the full $10,000.
Okay, so they're not a for-profit. Okay.
Who's the profit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How many visitors did you have this last year to the art fair?
37,000.
And how many visitors to Busch House?
Busch House, Ms. Ross. He fled before this moment.
Sorry.
It's okay. I think there's about $4,000, $4,500 Busch House. Because Busch House-
$4,250,000?
No.
Or 45?
$4,250. About, maybe it's about $6,000.
Okay. All right. And that's annually?
It's, that is our guided tours only. We can't use Busch House for events and things like that. It's, the contents are original contents back to 1878, and it's a really special case.
Do, does Busch, or sorry, the art fairs in the park, does, do you do events other than the art fair? I'm just trying to think, because in my mind, as a resident, they're all kind of the big thing that works together. But you wouldn't be involved in rental for an event, or anything like that for art. Just the art fair is your event?
Just the art fair. It's the kind of programming event. That's a program at the same time. We also have the Clayball, the art auction. But that's not an event we can apply for.
It's a fundraiser. Okay.
Because it's just fundraising.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, just to, the question of the funding for Busch House Museum, and also the question of rent, I think all of us have different circumstances in how we meet our obligations to the city. For Salem Art Association, we run Busch House Museum as our rent. An agreement made way back in 1988, we run Busch House. It costs us between $17,000 and $80,000 a year to run Busch House. And that, that's in the contract, is why we can use the barn as the arts facility.
So if you stop running Busch House, you lose the barn?
That's the implication, yes.
Wow. Okay.
And the Busch House is linked to the park, because you have to keep Busch House as a museum in order to keep the park. Because-
So you're spending of your, the funds you raise, $80,000 of the funds you raise from all sources goes to run Busch House for the benefit of 6,000 visitors?
Yes. Busch House Museum is a time capsule, in a way. It's a very unique situation. It's, you know, one of the heritage gemstones, if you like.
What's admission like these days?
What's it?
What's the admission to Busch House like?
$6, you know.
Good deal, yeah.
It's a deal.
Yeah.
And then the discounts, of course, if you're senior, or kids are free. Salem Kaiser Kids Coming Tours, they're free.
Great. Counsel Anderson?
Thank you. Sandra's raised a point that I want, that I want to make sure it's actually the way it is. You said that it was, the park itself was linked to the museum. Does that mean if there's not a museum there, the park reverts back to the Bush heirs in the state?
That's what I've heard.
Is that the case? I'm looking at staff now, and I'm looking at the city attorney who might know that. I believe it's called a condition subsequent, if I can remember back 40 years to my property class.
Well, the answer is, it depends.
And that was the answer, huh?
The deeds to Busch Park, there's three different deeds involved. There's different conditions on each of them. There are some changes along the way. And the status of those conditions on the city, on the grant of the park property to the city is probably not well-defined. We looked at it a few years ago, and we believe that some of the conditions have lapsed, or have terminated. I couldn't give you a clear answer right now on whether we have to operate a museum, and under what conditions that museum has to be operated. So I can come back to you with that in one form or another.
But, but we're going to operate the museum, right? Yes, Counsel Kager.
This is a snide remark, but like that ever stopped anybody, I mean, the blind school's gone.
Yeah. Different deed, different owner.
But the responsibility for Busch House has fallen on Salem Art Association all these years. Busch House is heritage, we're arts. And I think when it first was written that way, there was a kind of cadre of volunteers that took care of Busch House. But over the years, we, particularly in the last 10 years, it has professionalized to a very high standard. There's interesting archiving projects going on. And it's kind of respecting what a heritage that stands for. But it costs its own. It's got a certain staff group. And that's coming at quite a cost.
Yeah.
To us.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Adam?
Oh, can I just point out, there is a spreadsheet about the-
What is that?
There's a spreadsheet that came-
With?
That Alicia sent with a packet.
What packet?
The other one.
The one where you asked for the 15%?
That's right.
Yeah.
So just, it just gives you an idea of where the facilities are individually, in relation to the overall funding. So, it indicates the tax collections, and then Travel Salem consistent, city programs, and the different percentage of tax collections. And then the facility operators, and it indicates that in the, for the 1718 year, the current one we're in, each facility is getting one, is getting 0.74% of the overall budget. And this is kind of why we, as I say, we brought this forward, is that we'd like to see some kind of predictable, useful way in which we have a stake in the success, too.
All right.
And we appreciate-
Thank you.
Travel Salem, and the city, and the TOT Board, and all of you guys, holding it all together. And I think we're all on the same page. We want a vibrant and economically successful Salem.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Adam? Okay, Michelle Cordova? All right, that's all I have signed up. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, yes, Counsel.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify really quick. The only thing that I could see that was actually codified is the 25% to Travel Salem. Is that correct? And everything else is totally under city manager and council approval, for those fluctuations in percentages? Just the 25 is codified, that's it?
No, there's more. I think there's more.
In the code, I was just reading through.
No, no, I think there is. Just a second, we'll find out, because Brad knows this.
Well, no, and we asked that question, what if the economy goes really awful? And it's just a council. We can change that rule as well. If we had a really awful recession, we could modify that 25% just like we used to waive the funds as well.
Point's different, I think she's saying it's the only-
I'm saying, in actual SRC, the only thing that's actually allocated in the code is the 25% to our, whatever, destination marketing organization.
That and 9% tax.
Right. Everything else is up for city manager, council allocation, everything else. Convention center, the TOP, the pass-through grants, all that stuff. So we can respond, I mean, if we want to take some here to here to pay this, I mean, that's within our purview as a, as a city manager, budget committee, and council. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Counsel Anderson?
This seems to be, me, to be not a matter for the budget itself, in terms of how much we allocate, because the TOP money comes, and that's in the budget, and the TOP money goes through to parks, cultural, everybody else. So, am I correct in thinking this is really not tied into the budget process?
Oh, no, it's-
Okay, then how is it?
It's one of the funds you will go through the budget process, review, and vote on.
So, we review and vote on it. So at that point, we could review and vote on it, and change it like Counsel Kager says.
Sure.
But-
Yeah, you've done that.
Well, could we also, if we just, if we're just saying we, the TOP, well, I guess it's more appropriate to do it at the budget time. But I presume that if we're getting X dollars for TOP funds at any point in the year, can't we make some change in that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe the 25% change came at, not during the-
Right. I don't think it did. Okay.
Yeah. It was more like an instruction.
The reason I'm asking that is, I'd like to do a little more thinking about this, and talking with staff. And, you know, I don't know if all that'll happen as part of the budget process, or maybe some later point.
Yeah. One thing I would suggest, this does, this is a really interesting area. And all of you've been offered the opportunity for one-on-ones. I don't think all of you've taken them up. You may want to. There really is quite a bit here. And it's important, because it's one of the funds that we have that is discretionary, and can be used for, particularly for parks, that we really want to keep track of. So you want to take a close look at. Plus, just all these events, I, my interest in this has been, since I got involved in it, making sure we had as many events as possible. I think that is, and they do grow into whole programs. I think, from my, from my experience, it was the Multicultural Center and Worldbeat grew from a very small program to a very major community event. Watching that happen has been a real pleasure over the years. So there's, this, how those little events get started is really important. And they're hard for them to find seed money, too. So it's, I think this is an interesting area. And plus, if you'll take the time, we won't spend a whole evening on TOP during the budget cycle, which can be done. I've seen it over and over. Yes, sir?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank staff for this nice book.
Very good.
A complete anthology of TOP.
The Idiots Guide.
The fund is different than a lot of the other funds. They're fairly static, not a lot of activity inside. You know, the TOP fund is alive, because it's, you know, affects Salem. And people coming in and spending their money. So there's always been a lot of interest in it. And it's actually refreshing, because we get an update on a regular basis, because it is alive and moving, so.
Counsel K?
I appreciated the conversation tonight. And I noticed kind of two different paths as far as, I appreciate the TOP funds being used to kind of- as far as, I appreciate the TOPF funds being used to kind of help plant that seed for revenue, that we're bringing in people, that it's generating tourism dollars for our economy, but I also was very cognizant of the value to our community, and not just that tourism's or tourists are using these facilities, these parks, coming to these events, but the value that's added to residents and how it enriches the quality of life, as was spoken to, and also just being mindful of the sometimes overlooked cost of tourism to the community, just making sure that we're being mindful of those costs as well when people come in, when they're using facilities. Sometimes that can be increased staffing or increased wear and tear, just that we're not setting ourselves up for something that we have a deferred cost or an overlooked cost years ahead. So very happy for this conversation.
Very good. Okay, then we are adjourned.